So this is out of here.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Like down this area?
Off of Hester Way. It's all back here.
Is it the one that goes down? And go out Hester Way? Is it the left of Hester Way or the right?
It's gonna be right. If we're coming this way down Hester Way, it's gonna be right towards Blackberry down here. You can see, all of this is built out. I mean, so all of this is already built out out there. So you're looking at a section that's nowhere you've built out yet.
Alright, it's four o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting, the Salado Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is Tuesday, August 13th. We're going to start out with public comments. Anyone who desires to address the planning and zoning may do so. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. And you're welcome to come on up.
For the record, if you are here in regards to the public hearing, that call will be later on in the agenda.
That's true. Yeah, if you're speaking about one of the matters on the agenda, just wait until that agenda item comes up. But if it's just a general comment, you're welcome to speak now.
Okay. We're here for this.
The public meeting and hearing, so that will be later.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, final call for public comments. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First item are minutes from January 22nd. Can we vote on all these at once, or do we need to do them separately?
You can do just one motion. If any item needs to be considered separately, you can pull that item.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes from earlier this year?
So move.
Second.
All three.
Alright, all in favor, raise your hands. Passes. Move on to the regular session, presentation, discussion, and possible action on construction plat, plans of Amity Estates Phase Five, a 41.397 acre, 57 lot subdivision located at the intersection of West Amity and FM 1670 in the Village's ETJ. Chrissy, do you have anything to present?
I do. This is the fifth and final phase of Amity Estates development. They are looking at a 41.397 acre tract. It's gonna have 57 lots. The construction plat and plans have been reviewed by our engineer, John Simsek. He finds it to be in conformance with all of our requirements, as well as the approved concept plan on file. As a note, water services are provided by Salado Water Supply Corporation through an eight-inch water line in the right-of-way. The applicant is proposing onsite sewage facilities for all lots in the subdivision. All common areas and lots will be owned and maintained by the subdivision homeowners association. And after construction plat is approved here, it goes to the Belle County Engineers' Office, where they will also do an approval. Once they do an approval, construction on the final phase can begin. Once construction is complete, we'll see a final plat come through this commission. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about Amity Estates.
This has been approved by the engineers. We're here.
The construction plat and all of the construction plans meet all of our technical standards and our subdivision ordinance requirements, so it has met all approvals.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the action on the construction plans as is.
A second.
Right away.
Is there a question? Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the construction plat plans for Amity Estates Phase Five, please raise your hand. Item B is presentation, discussion, and possible action on a concept plan revision and associated waivers for Mill Creek Springs, a subdivision located near the intersection of Blackberry and Royal Street in the Village's ETJ. Chrissy?
Thank you. Mill Creek Springs is a subdivision located in our ETJ that has 12 phases. Phases one through eight are completely built out. Phases nine, Phase Nine, is under review right now in our Engineers' Office. Phase 10 is potentially being sold to a new developer. As such, the new developer has presented us with a concept plan revision, which will encompass Phase 10, Phase 11, and Phase 12. In addition to the concept plan revision, the developer is asking for waivers to our technical standards. Technical standards are a supplement to our subdivision ordinance. Specifically, this is Section 5.5 Drainage System Requirements and Section 5.4 Waterspread Limits. I'm gonna go over the sections just a little bit. You'll also note that I've given you a supplement letter from our engineer that talks about what they're asking for and why the engineer and staff are in favor of granting their request. Section 5.5 requires that unlined channels only be considered for quantities of flow equivalent to the capacity of a 72-inch pipe. The applicant would instead like to use grass-lined channels to appropriately convey water through the subdivision while keeping the aesthetics of the natural channel. So, just a little bit of background. Our transportation plan calls for a minor collector to exit through this subdivision. The applicant originally was seeking to ask for a waiver and not build out a minor collector and have it be just a residential-sized street. After discussions with the village administrator's staff and our engineer, we were able to come to a compromise or mitigating factor, if you will, where the developer would build out the street for the size of a minor collector, which is what we're looking for. We're wanting to move that traffic from that subdivision out to Royal and Blackberry. So he's agreeable to do that, but in doing so, he'd like for the drainage, again, to be a grass-lined channel. And then additionally, Section 5.4 requires that minor collector-grade roads be designed to convey the 25-year storm drainage while keeping one full traffic lane open each direction. The applicant is proposing to use a collector-grade roadway to convey water up to no more than the top of the curb. The maximum depth of water in an eight-foot open lane would be no deeper than two inches under these design conditions. So both our engineer and his engineer worked out those figures and those numbers, and they've determined that by building it to a minor collector, if we'll allow for just one lane of that traffic to convey that water, then that would be a mitigating factor. Water services are provided by Salado Water Supply Corporation. The applicant is proposing onsite sewage facilities for all the lots. Again, all common areas will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. The village engineer, again, has provided an email. I'll go over it just briefly. What he says basically is, "The street is classified as a minor collector, which would require one lane of traffic to remain open in each direction for a 25-year storm event." They are requesting a variance from this requirement that would allow them to design it based on a local street criteria, which requires that water flow must not exceed the top of curb during the five-year event. The village supports this request for the following reasons. First, the street will be designed and constructed as a minor collector in all other facets. With a six-inch crown in the road, even if the gutters are at top of curb level, there will still be an 11-foot wide lane in the middle of the road that would have no more than 1.65 inch of water depth, which is traversable by emergency vehicles and passenger cars. Most experts advise that standard cars may be driven in water as deep as 3.93 inches. In this cross-section, two 11-foot wide lanes in the center are still available with a maximum depth of 3.3 inches, again, assuming water is flowing at a top of curb on the outside. Section 5.5 is actually, again, of the technical standards manual, and the village supports this request for the following reasons. The channel capacity requirements do not waiver from what is defined in the technical standards. The grass-lined channel has water filtering qualities for low-flow events, and the maintenance, mowing, periodic cleaning, and grading will be the responsibility of the HOA. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the waivers or the concept plan revision. I know it's a lot of info.
Chrissy, can you or can someone in the room describe the construct of the grass-lined channels? What do they look like? How big are they? And why?
Well, what we're saying is basically that where the water's going to travel is not gonna be concrete-lined. It's gonna be grass, so it's gonna maintain a more natural feel in the subdivision. They're trying to maintain that rural feel, so it's all gonna be grass-lined channels.
So it'll be a grass ditch. Does the minor collector have requirements for curb, gutter, sidewalk?
Carb and gutter, so this is going to be built with curb. I thought I heard something, I'm sorry. And then sidewalks in the minor collector... I'm having to think right now. So the subdivision will have side... will not have... it will have sidewalks, because it's going to be... it's met all the other standards. And so a minor collector streets have to have sidewalks on either side. And so because the street's being built out to the collector standard, it will have those sidewalks. Again, originally, the applicant had asked that the street be built to a local street standard. But he's not asking for that at this time. He's asking for the ability to just use the drainage as a local street.
So we've got sidewalks on either side, but now we've got grass drainage as opposed to a concrete drainage ditch.
Yeah, it's gonna be grass-lined channels to move the water. And then again, he's going to maintain that one open lane.
Okay.
In the event of a storm.
Does this minor collector, does it feed all the way into the Phase Five current road?
Yes.
It does?
It will feed all the way through this Phase 10.
Okay. And it is the only minor collector?
Correct.
How many lots total are in the Mill Creek Springs subdivision?
Oh, that is... I'm sorry, I don't have from the beginning phases. I know that Phase Eight was, I believe, 42 lots. I believe this phase is 40... I'm sorry, 64 lots. But yes, this will be the only... and this is our opportunity to have a minor collector, to move that traffic out of this subdivision, which is desperately needed. We need that street to move the traffic.
Yes. Yes.
So the change of the drainage ditches, there's nothing that's changed as far as the... where they're located or anything else, the same, only you're just gonna leave it grass as opposed to lining it with concrete?
And it's important to remember that this street will be built so that it is still able to carry the traffic flow of a collector street.
So it's basically, you're gonna accomplish the same thing, it sounds like to me. Is that pretty much correct?
With a little bit of, again, mitigation in regards to the drainage.
The homeowners will be responsible for more maintenance because of the grass.
And the HOA, correct.
The big difference is, in the normal collector situation, the rain is just gonna take water off the street, and then the road itself's wider. But in this situation, they're burying that bit, where it can still be passable, it's just the road's gonna carry more water than it normally would carry.
Mm-hmm.
And it's still passable.
But that's not the only way out either, is it?
It's a big way out.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the only other way out is right here off of Blackberry through the Phase Five. Everyone in Phase Eight and Nine right now are traveling through Phase Five to get to Blackberry. So this, when it comes on as a minor collector, will be a game changer. And with all of these being regular streets, it's going to be the traffic street. Everyone, if there's a flood, everyone in Phase Eight and Nine and Five, they're all going to be coming out of this. And the people that are in on this side of Mill Creek, because it all connects to other neighborhoods, they're all going to be coming onto this minor collector, so it's crucial that it's travelable.
It's crucial that it's a minor collector and not a local street.
Yeah.
That will be accomplished by this concept plan revision.
It's a wider roadway than a local street.
So the original plan was the concreted collector, the drainage, and a regular street, and now it's grass drainage ditch with a collector street.
The original request is for a local street. Our transportation management calls for a collector, which is a wider street, because it carries more volume.
Yeah.
The collector street requirements talk about different types of drainage approaches. In this situation, we've agreed to the grass ditch, with the assurance that it's maintained with the rural environment, trying to grade, we're getting a wider roadway out of it, and it's a passable roadway in times of...
And if I could point out, right now, there is a concept plan on file, but the concept plan that is on file and approved does not show this as a build-out of a collector. And so this revision accomplishes that.
Besides the minor collector, are there other changes to the layout of Phases 10 through 12?
They've laid out some of their lots a little bit more differently. It allows for them to get some lots in and to build this road to this standard. But again, all of those aspects have met every one of our requirements.
Great. Is there any other... are there any other questions for Chrissy? Alright, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the concept plan revision and the associated waivers for Mill Creek Springs.
Second.
Any discussion? Need a question called? Alright. All in favor of accepting the revision and waivers, please raise your hand. All... all hands?
I'm sorry, that was...
We all raised our hands.
Okay, I saw a hand at the end, so I just wanted to make sure.
I thought you were asking me again. I didn't raise it high enough.
I'm a circus today. Hello. Okay. Moving on to Item C in our regular hearing, discuss and consider possible action on changing the time of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We have changed the planning and zoning times from noon, when I was an original member of the Planning and Zoning a few years back, and now it starts at 4:00 on Tuesdays. So it's a possibility that changing the time again could bring in additional residents and make it easier for them to attend these meetings. So I'd like to open up discussion.
So although it's... your dates and times and such are not established by ordinance, so if you make this change and you find it not to be working like you were thinking, so you can always look back. It's... you have the ability to vary your marriage.
Is there a proposal on the table for a specific time to change it to?
Yes, sir. I personally think that I think it's ludicrous that we have a meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon for such an important situation, what we got here with the replat.
Would you step up to the podium and state your name?
Yes, sir. We would have to.
We'll be able to hear you better, and that'll work out for everyone. Just right up here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. There's a mic up there.
Yes, sir. My name's Roger Mullins. I live in the Salado Mills subdivision. I'm a retired investment broker of 32 years and also a semi-retired home builder. I still build homes occasionally, but I think it's ridiculous that we're having a meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon on such an important issue as what we're facing today with the next issue. I think that's up for debate. I mean, most of our residents, you know, are working people, and they just simply can't take off to be here. And why they haven't sent in, I know we all got the forms, the... to where we can write in complaints and stuff, or write in our disdain for the proposed action there with our... with the lot increasement and so forth. I mean, we're a professional community up there of people that are... I mean, we got CEOs that live up there. We got regional managers and district managers that live up there. I mean, these are people that have jobs, and they can't... they just can't, you know, for something like this at 4:00 in the afternoon, I mean, they're just not gonna take off and can't take off in a lot of cases, you know, to be here. And so this 4:00 meeting, I think is crazy.
Do you have a specific time that you would like to recommend?
Well, I think it should be after normal business hours of a normal, you know, situation of maybe 6:00. Well, like, I know we have a 6:00 meeting scheduled for Thursday. I mean, now, that's more reasonable, so people can get home and stuff like that, but people, you know, are not gonna wanna take off of work if it comes to something like this. I mean, 'cause some people just don't get it, maybe, or they don't realize how important this issue is to us as a community of this proposed replat of our subdivision there. Man, I just don't understand why this was called for 4:00 in the afternoon. I happen to be a retired investment broker of 32 years. I'm a semi-retired home builder. I still build homes, but just occasionally. But a lot of these folks, I mean, they're important people, people with some wealth, people with some stature, and they have important jobs, and at 4:00 in the afternoon, I mean, they just simply can't be here.
Your point is well taken, and we appreciate your input. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Alright, are there any other comments? Do I have a motion from one of the commissioners as to a better date and time?
I move that we make the time at 6:00 PM on the same day of the week.
I'll second that.
We find 6:00 PM to be just a little bit early, getting back from work and things like that. I'd like to amend that to 6:30.
6:30 is the time of the Alderman meeting on Thursdays, so I think having that consistency with the Alderman meetings will make it easier for people to remember. Would you like to revise your motion?
6:30, five o'clock.
I'll still second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to shift the meetings to Tuesdays, the second and fourth Tuesdays, as called, at 6:30 PM. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, we're now going to open up the floor to the public hearing for the discussion and possible action on a replat of Salado Mills, Phase Two, an 11.24 acre, 38 lot subdivision lot located on Stenit Mill Road in the Village of Salado, ETJ.
Well, Katie, before you open, if you want me to give my briefing?
Sure.
Back in April, both the commission and the Board of Aldermen voted on a concept plan amendment for Salado Mills, the entire subdivision. Part of that concept plan amendment included a replat of Phase Two. The replat of Phase Two was to accomplish three things. Number one, to establish some drainage tracks that would be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. Second, to reduce the lot count in the existing Phase Two to make room for an additional piece of property that the developer had purchased, and so he could build 11 lots in a new Phase Three. So the Phase Two would reduce the lot count of the existing lots to add in 11 additional lots. In doing so, it would also create a roadway through one of the existing lots to the new Phase Three. Again, that concept plan revision was recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning and then approved by the Board of Aldermen back in April. We did notify staff of the public hearing on July 11th. We posted in the Village Voice, and additionally, we mailed out 63 notices to property owners within the subdivision and 18 property owners within 200 feet of the subdivision. As of the start of this meeting, we received 37 responses in favor of the replat, and we received four in opposition. Three of the oppositions actually had comments that they submitted for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review, and I've given each of you a copy of those as to what their specific opposition was. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. I would like to remind the commission that your powers in establishing subdivision regulations happen when we do the subdivision ordinance. Local government code is very specific in regards to the plating of property in the state of Texas. Chapter 212 states that if a property has conformed to your requirements as outlined in your subdivision ordinance, that you shall approve the plat. So I just would like to remind the commission that that is Local Government Code, Chapter 212, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about that as well.
Yes, we do. Alright, I would like to open up the public hearing at this time for public comments. First call.
Good afternoon. I'm Deats Worthout. Address is 11300 Stenit Mill Road. We received the notice because our property is within 200 feet of the subdivision. My comments are not in regards to the replating, though this notice doesn't give us any information as to what that's going to be, whether it's an increase, decrease, change of lot sizes or anything. Notice that we received just simply says, "We're receiving this notice because we're a property owner with 200..." a property owner with 200 feet. Thus, there wasn't really anything that we could comment on, not knowing what it was, so we didn't send in our comment. I do have some concerns, not with the replating, but just with the entrance from Salado Mills onto Stinnet Mill. There's no yield sign, there's no stop sign, traffic going southbound on Stinnet Mill. If you're exiting Salado Mills, they've now constructed a beautiful entrance, beautiful walls, fencing, but you have a complete total blind spot to your right as you're exiting on southbound Stinnet Mill traffic. You have to actually go beyond the beautiful, and it's beautiful, he did a really nice job, but you have to really pull out before you can see any oncoming traffic coming south on Stinnet Mill. If everybody was real cautious, I don't think there'd be a problem, but you've got construction workers that just make a beeline right out of there, right out of there. They don't even see what's coming southbound. There's got to be a yield sign or a stop sign there, and I'm sure there's an ordinance that would support that. You're exiting onto a county road. The other thing is, is that it's not been a big problem, but it's getting to be, the community is golf cart friendly. That's in Salado Mills. That doesn't apply to Stinnet Mill. Again, that's a county road. There's golf carts going up and down Stinnet Mill now, and school's going to be starting. It's not a safe situation. Even though the golf carts have their caution sign on the back, it's still not a good thing to happen. They did build a berm on Stinnet Mill, for obvious reasons. They've cleared all of the weeds off the berm where their last lot is, but then from that lot past our house, we have a berm and nothing but weeds. So those are just my comments. I don't know if they apply to the replating issue, but again, it doesn't say anything in here as what this is for or what the replating is.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name's Charlene Hamilton. I am a resident of Salado Mills. My family was one of the first residents to build on Ferguson Mill Road. We closed on our home back in December of 2018, so we've been there some time, and we researched this land since 2017 because we wanted to know what the concepts were. We chose to build at the end of Ferguson Mill Road because that road, as you can see from your map, is a curved cul-de-sac, and that provided us with the privacy and the low traffic flow that we desired. Again, we researched this going all the way back to February 17th, when we visited the developer, Larry Rosman, White River Homes, with our real estate agent, and we drove around on Mr. Rosman's Polaris, and he pointed out what his future plans were, and at no time did he mention that there would be a potential road coming off of Ferguson Mill. In fact, what he stated was he would develop the phase, which I think would be Phase Two, oh, I'm sorry, Phase Three, that would sit between Phase One, where you have the homes facing Stinnet in the farmland, and the phase that we live in. There is some empty undeveloped land in between the two. That's what was supposed to be developed with an entrance that would allow for through traffic for any future homes. So we made our choice predicated on that information. And he never applied that there would be, the integrity of our road would be disrupted with more riverfront homes. More riverfront homes are beautiful, that's wonderful, but we're concerned about the increased traffic flow. Now, we have one neighbor in the audience already that has a kindergartner, and I have a family building across the street from me who have a three and a five-year-old. These kids are going to want to play in their front yard, they're going to want to ride their bikes, and I'm sure, I don't want to speak for my neighbors, but this is always a concern when you choose land about safety issues. Okay. I want to point out to you that I called Kristy, and thank you very much, Kristy. She gave me, when I had got my letter, I was confused too, and so I called, and I said, "Please, can you, in layman's terms, tell me what's happening?" Because we aren't experts, we're not planning and zoning experts. And she gave me a very good description, and quite honestly, that's what got me concerned. You all, thank goodness for you all, because you're the only ones that communicated to us. We have not heard from our HOA. Now, we have, as of April 9th, we have an HOA apparently, because I have a letter from them, and I had to pay them several hundreds of dollars before I could even close on my home in December, and they weren't even organized then. But they were organized in April, and they should be holding monthly meetings, and they should be letting residents who are paid customers of theirs knowing what's happening with this concept plan, and we haven't heard anything from them. That is four months ago that they organized, okay? But I'm hearing from you, thank goodness, which is why I took the time to come and speak. I will close in saying that I agree with my new neighbor that we need a yield sign or a stop sign or something there. And I would also say, in the future, Rose Lane and Stinnet Mill, if you're coming home in dark, really dangerous out there, too. Adding a through street, this is just going to quadruple our safety hazards, and I would hate to see, now, I'm from Austin, and I chose this area to retire in. In Austin, they wait till somebody's killed before they put a stop sign up, okay? They wait till somebody is maimed or injured, and I would just hate to see that happen. I know we have a lot of teenagers living in the surrounding areas, and I would just hate to see that happen. Finally, golf carts. We were told that we have a private golf cart path that's wonderful, that leads down to the golf range. It was supposed to be gated so that only residents, paying residents of this HOA, could go up and down that path, which is another reason we made our decision. However, yes, we have golf carts coming in from, I think maybe neighboring subdivisions down off of Stinnet, and they're cutting through because it's a quick way to get to Chisholm Trail and get downtown. And I just had to stop a young lady with a yield sign on the back of her golf cart and tell her, "This is not a cut-through, it's a private subdivision." And so this is not a situation that you all can handle, that's our HOA again, but I'm just letting you know, these are our frustrations, and we want to protect the integrity of Salado Mills. Finally, the 37 comments that came back in support clearly do not live in the subdivision because there's only four of us out there right now. There are four occupied homes. So it's not going to affect their lives the way it affects ours. Thank you very much.
Entire subdivision, four homes?
Yes, sir. Four homes in Phase Two.
What about Phase One?
Phase One, I think you have five individuals living over there. It faces the farmland off of Stinnet Mill.
Okay, thank you so much, Charlene. Any other comments? Yes.
Hi, my name is Joanna Eichelhart, and I'm LCSW. My husband Steve is a pharmacist. We just moved this weekend. We just closed on our house on 8-8. And we have Beauregard, who is five and starting kindergarten, and Alyssa, who's nine and fourth grade, and Katie, who is almost 15 and starting 10th grade. And we chose this area and this subdivision for the safety, for the idea that we were shown when we were looking at homes on how it's going to go. Well, we're right off of the main drag that would go back and forth to this additional 11 houses. We're at 1031 Ferguson Mill. And so I have concerns as a parent about the changes they're going to have, the traffic it is going to bring, because we bought this house as our forever home, being told just recently that the subdivision is going to be as-is. They didn't mention this to us at all, and if this has been going on since April, then why weren't we notified when we purchased the home? So I have concerns over the legitimacy of the intent of the people who sold us the homes. If, why weren't we notified of that? That option wasn't given to me or my family, and I just bought a half a million dollar home to live the rest of my life in. So I'm not thrilled about it, and I'm voicing my concern now because I wasn't here to get the paperwork then, but I also wasn't notified about this. And I would imagine it would be ethical to let me know before I purchased a house on 8-8, and I literally heard this from my neighbor Roger yesterday. So I'm here to show my support and my confusion, and I hope you can understand and empathize with that. And that's it.
Thank you, Joanna. All right, we're going to do a second call for public comments. We're required to do three. Yes.
Hello, my name is Ray Lerner. I'm one of the other groups of folks that live in the new area where you've just changed or there's a proposal to change. I'm in the rare position of being the one that really makes out on this because I'm at the turnoff where you're combining six or seven lots into one, and you know they're not going to be developed. So why do I have a problem with this? Well, I have more of a problem that there's a fairness issue here. We bought our lot, and at the time, we saw what it looked like, and we also moved in in December, so we'd been there. I got nothing in April. I mean, no one reached out and said, "Oh, by the way, we're planning some changes here." And it's a last-minute sort of thing that the information is getting out. So I really have some serious issues with this. As I said, it affects me positively. Heck, send all the cars down next to them, not by my house. But that's not right. And what we've got now is a development which sees that it's, "Oh, wow, it's best we can jump across over here, not have to build a street, we can change the way we're going to do things." And they win, and the residents are the ones who lose. That doesn't seem right. What seems right is the reach in your pocket if you're a developer, and you pay for another entrance for an area that you want to develop, and not just put it on the backs of people who really have been shopping for a long time, who save, these are expensive homes, you know. We're not all multimillionaires. I mean, that's, we bought because it's a really nice place. I bought because of a golf cart, being able to drive that and not have to drive a car. So I just, I really just appeal to, what's right here? I mean, let's talk about development. We're not trying to get rid of development, but let's have honest development as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the third and final call for public comment.
Thank y'all for hearing me again. Guys, I mean, I'm a retired investment broker of 32 years and a semi-retired home builder. Most of our residents, and I've spoken with nearly all of them, and I'm the one who's keeping track of all the email addresses, even the folks that aren't living there yet. I have, I take my dogs for a golf cart ride every morning, otherwise they won't talk to me for the rest of the day. So I take my dogs for a golf cart ride every morning, so I ride around the neighborhood, and I speak with the builders, and I speak with the, and if I get lucky enough to actually meet the homeowner that's actually building a property out there or building a home out there, you know, I get their names, I get their email addresses and so forth. So I have a pretty extensive list, and I'll be glad to share it with you guys if you'd like. I mean, the HOA should have all that anyway, but they absolutely do not share that with the homeowner. So I've taken it upon myself, as a semi-retiree, 61 years old, I live at 1063 Ferguson Mill Road, and I live at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I don't know if y'all have the original plat that was given to us when we bought our homes, but I have it right here, and you guys, you're welcome to make a copy, but there's nothing here that shows a potential road being cut through Lot 10 and a future expansion, you know, down the road. You know, guys, I think that most of us, a lot of us are either retired or getting pretty close to that. We were looking for a quiet place where we can call home, a pretty place that we can call home. I found this lot, and I found this subdivision by accident, me and my wife just driving around one day. I built two huge homes that my wife and I lived in up on Hester Way, right on the golf course. I built two of them. They just got too big, so we kept downsizing. So after I sold my second home that we built, we were trying to find another nice place because Salado is just the place to be. I mean, it's just absolutely hands-down the place to live. So we did extensive research trying to find a good lot to build our final home. We accidentally stumbled upon this Salado Mills residence. At the time, I mean, they didn't have any paved streets, I mean, it was just dirt roads. And so, and it didn't say who the developer was or how you can contact him or anything, but after a while, after time, for a month or two, we were living in, we sold our home, our last home, up on Hester Way, and we just rented a Deor Horton home there in Temple, which drove me crazy, but that's another story. But anyway, we finally stumbled upon this location up here, and just beautiful with the trees surrounding the whole subdivision, and it was going to be a small subdivision. And I thought, "Man, what a great place to live, what a great place to retire." You know, you're not going to have all this traffic, you're not going to have all this. And they're like, "Oh, we're going to put in a community pool, we've got this pavilion, we're going to have, you know, barbecue pits and all this kind of stuff in the pavilion." And so I told my wife, I'm like, "You know what?" I said, "This is a place for us." And ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you, I mean, the folks that were pro for this expansion, they have no clue what they're about to get into. They don't understand it, they don't realize what this is going to do. Guys, what my concern is, and now, I live on the cul, the end, when you go down Ferguson Mill, and you turn, and you have to turn left currently, and there's a little cul-de-sac down there, I mean, I live on the end of the cul-de-sac, so if that road goes through there, I mean, it's not going to, I'm not going to have people blasting by my house every day. So I don't have that dog in the fight, okay? But what I do have is, and I don't have any children in the home, okay, but I do have a lot of grandkids. Think about the people, I mean, look at the number of lots, I mean, look at your plat, look at the number of lots that are being sold along Ferguson Mill Road. The only way, when this expansion, if this is, if this expansion goes through, which I think would be a horrendous decision, these people along the creekside here, they paid a lot of money for those lots. I paid a lot of money for my lot, for my income, okay? What my concern is, ladies and gentlemen, is if we allow that expansion to go through, and we allow that road to be cut through the end of the cul-de-sac on Ferguson Mill Road, those cars are going to be coming by my house. So again, I don't quite have quite as big of a dog in that fight as the other residents that have spent big money on these creekfront lots and spent big money on the Ferguson Mill lots here. And my biggest concern, guys, is that we've got that community pool when you first come in the subdivision. The community pool is right there, and also is the, what do you call it? The community pool is right there, and also is the, what do you call it, the, well, you got the mailboxes, you've got the pool, and you also have the awning, the, there you go, thank you very much. But guys, what my concern is, is that I've got grandkids, don't have any kids living at home, but I've got grandkids. If they expand down Ferguson Mill, and they put those additional lots down there, Ferguson Mill, right now, is, other than, I mean, of course, they're currently building, and so we got concrete trucks and things, but once that's all done, and we get Ferguson Mill kinda built up, I mean, that's all gonna calm down. But if they expand down Ferguson Mill, down to these other eleven lots, which they've, you know, projected, it's all a money deal with them. They just wanna make more money, obviously, because those lots are worth, you know, back up to the creek. Okay, I got it, I understand it. But they cut out those other lots to make those other lots to where they still are in compliance with forty-nine lots total.
That's right. Roger?
Yes.
Sir, I appreciate your comments. We've exceeded the three minutes I'm supposed to limit each public comment to, so I'll have to ask you to let me close out the public comments at this time. I appreciate everything you've said, and we definitely respect your opinions.
Is there somebody that can yield me some of their time? I mean, I mean, this, I mean, guys, this is an important issue.
We definitely understand the importance and the impact this has on your neighborhood, and we respect your time and the time of our village employees being here. So I'm gonna have to ask that we move on from the public comments at this time, and I really appreciate everything that you've shared with us today.
This would be a horrible mistake to allow this to happen, because it was not told to me, just as the other folks have said, no one told me, the builder didn't tell me. Matter of fact, that Lot 10 where they wanna put that road through, I wanted to buy it. They kept telling me, "Oh, we got a contingency contract with another buyer." Well, I waited for two months, and I kept calling, I kept calling the developer back, going, "What are they gonna do? Are they gonna buy?" I'm like, "I'll write you a check right now." I said, "I want that lot." They kept putting me off, putting me off. Well, come to find out, which it was never told to me, that, "Oh, we have a potential of future expansion of cutting the road through here, putting more lots in," that was never told to me. And so if I was told that, I would probably have bought a lot, tried to find a lot in another area. Because I want, these people in Salado, these people in Salado Mills, they want peace, they want quiet. We don't want this Ferguson Mill to become a highway.
All right. Public comments are now closed, we're gonna move on. Kristy, I'd like for you to share with the commissioners exactly what we're voting on today, and how we got to this point.
Okay. I'd like to give just a little bit of background, too, just to address some issues. Salado Mills Phase Two, which was originally reviewed and approved during the years 2014, 2015, and 2016. The developer at that time did not own the property that is being added to the subdivision. So when Phase Two was approved by this commission and by the Board of Aldermen, this property was not owned by the developer. That purchase came later, which resulted in the concept plan revision. Where we are right now is, the concept plan revision was reviewed by our engineer, it was reviewed by Bell County, who was another factor in this decision process. And the concept plan revisions met all of our subdivision requirements. Yes, they are adding additional lots, however, they are removing lots from this phase to account for those lots. The concept plan was approved by this commission and by our Board of Aldermen. The concept plan was not public noticed, as that's not a requirement. The replat is a requirement to be public noticed, which is why it was. I'd like to address the number of properties that were noticed. Although there only may be four homes, there are properties that are owned, each one of those lots is owned by someone. It could be the developer, it could be a property owner who's bought the lot and hasn't built yet, but there were that number of notices sent out, again, sixty-three property owners within the subdivision itself, and then eighteen property owners within two hundred feet. So that accounts for why that large number of responses was received with the small number of homes being built. Again, our subdivision requirements are laid out in our subdivision ordinance, and the developer has met all aspects of that ordinance in regards to this replat, and in regards to his future phases, which were also approved in concept with the concept plan. And I hope I've, I'd be more than happy to answer more specific questions.
So.
A question here. You stated when we first started on the public hearing here, that chapter 212 requires that if all standards are met, then we approve it. Is that correct?
Right. The way local government code looks at this is, for simplified reasons or purposes, I wanna explain it like this. We develop a subdivision ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Committee, the Board of Aldermen, different committees that are established, all have input into that. And so we developed this document that says, "If you do this, and you meet all of these requirements, this is how you get a plat in Salado." And so that's where your power lies. You've created that document, and every developer must either meet the requirements of that document, or come before you and ask for a waiver to them. And so that's where you've said, "If you do this, we'll approve what you have." So local government code looks at it that way, and you're very, very limited in what you can do once they've met every requirement you've asked them to.
Okay. And let me say to the people out there who so passionately talk about this, we, I appreciate the dilemma and your concern. It sounds to me like there's an HOA problem out there that somebody needs to take care of, but that's not our business, that's your business to get with the HOA. And I'm not sure that traffic signs are traffic signs in ETJ, is that our responsibility?
That would be Bell County.
Okay, that's not our responsibility either, I don't think.
Now, let me jump in and tell you from a standpoint, we try to be proactive and try to be responsive in these type of situations, and rest assured, we plan to notify the developer of the concerns and provide a copy of the audio of this meeting tonight, so he can hear the concerns and see what's not here, and talk about the HOA issues. Those are serious issues that need to get addressed.
Absolutely.
As far as the traffic control situation, Jim, we're gonna go ahead and pass those on to Bell County Road, and have them look at that and see if they can address those things.
Okay. And the only other comment?